And welcome to Cedar Falls Regular City Council Meeting, this May 7, 2018. I now call this meeting to order and ask for a roll call from Adam Clark, please.
Miller?
Here.
DeBoer?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Landford?
Here.
Dara?
Here.
Wieland? Green?
Here.
Mr. Wieland is not present right now.
He might be coming in. We'll move on to Item C, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting April 16?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. I'm going to now take a moment to read a proclamation. It reads, "Whereas every year on the second Saturday in May, letter carriers across the country collect non-perishable food as part of the nation's largest one-day food drive, distributing the donations to local food banks. And whereas the letter carriers stamp out hunger food drive is just one example of how letter carriers work to make a difference in the lives of those they serve. Since 1991, over 1.5 billion pounds of food have been collected. And whereas we would like to recognize all letter carriers for their hard work and their commitment to their communities, all of the food collected in our community stays in the community. And whereas we also recognize the noteworthy milestone of 26 years that the National Letter Carrier Food Drive celebrates in 2018. Now therefore, I, Jim Brown, Mayor of the City of Cedar Falls, do hereby proclaim that Saturday, May 12, be designated as Letter Carrier's Food Drive Day and encourage the citizens of our community to support the food drive by placing non-perishable items in or near your mailbox on Food Drive Day. Your letter carrier will pick it up and deliver when delivering the mail, and together we can all help feed our hungry. Signed, the 7th day of May, 2018." Thanks to all the letter carriers and what you folks do, especially on that particular day. Moving on to Item D, are there any agenda revisions, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, Agenda Item K, Executive Session, is being removed from the agenda.
Thank you. So noted for council? Item E is Special Order of Business. E1 is a public hearing on the proposed plans for the Center Street Recreational Trail Project. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Any objections filed with the city clerk?
I have no objections, but I do have one written comment.
Very good, thank you. Item C is oral comments. We'll start with city staff, I believe, to make a couple of comments on this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So the Center Street Recreational Trail Project is a project that will construct a 10-foot recreational trail along the west side of Center Street from Cottage Row Road to Lone Tree Road, so about 1,000 feet south of Cottage Row Road's intersection with Lone Tree is where the trail will start. It is a DOT bid letting scheduled for May 15. The estimated project cost is $531,283.67. The Transportation Alternative Program, Service Transportation Program, and Transportation Improvements Program administered through the Iowa DOT will provide $258,551.38 of the project funding, and the remaining cost of the project will be funded by general obligation bonds.
Thank you, John. And I saw one public comment, I'll open it up for you, Roger.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Roger White, 2303 Greenwood Avenue, and also Chair of the Cedar Falls Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I'm not making an objection tonight, I just want to point out a little bit of information and then make a request at the end. Currently, there are bike lanes along both shoulders of Center Street from the bridge over the Cedar River to approximately Claire Street Cottage Row Road. This is an extremely popular route for bicyclists going north, northwest, or northeast. Originally, the Bike Pedestrian Committee recommended continuing the paved shoulder bike lane design. However, the adopted network map does provide for both bike lanes and the trail. In the segment that we're looking at today, the trail is on the map that was adopted in 2015. The committee is aware of the desire of North Cedar Neighborhood Association to construct the multi-use trail, and the committee is supportive of that project that you're looking at today. The information that I would like to provide is that, in order to utilize that trail, cyclist coming from First Street and going north will first have a multi-use, or excuse me, a paved shoulder bike lane for the first portion of the trip, and then at the intersection with Cottage Row and Claire Street will have to cross both lanes of traffic, and then to join the trail, progress north on the trail as far as Lone Tree. At Lone Tree, everything ends, if they're going north, they'll come back, cross the road again, and have to take the highway or the street from that point until the city limits. I know, I'm sure someone in the engineering department is aware of this, but Black Hawk County, which has jurisdiction of the road from the city limits all the way up to Jamesville, is going to be resurfacing that road, they call it Waverly Road outside of the city limits, and they're going to add a paved shoulder, three foot approximately wide on both sides, which will be somewhat similar to what we have right now as far as Claire Street and Cottage Row. So for a bicyclist going north, you'll start out on a bike lane, paved shoulder, you'll have to cross the lanes of traffic, jump on the trail, take the trail until Lone Tree. At Lone Tree, there is no accommodation, so you'd be in the street from there until city limits. At city limits, when the county is done with this project, then there will be the shoulder, paved shoulder, and they're not calling it a bike lane, but it will be essentially a bike lane that you can progress northward. And so in a matter of two miles, we've got those, that variety of accommodations. What I suspect is going to happen, and I think the city should be aware of this, is that a lot of bicyclists going north, when they get to Claire Street and Cottage Row intersection, will just continue on the road. It's legal, I mean, the city is not banning that, but you need to be prepared for the fact that I think that a lot of cyclists, particularly road riding cyclists, will continue to do that. That's not to denigrate the trail, the trail is still good for, you know, recreational use in the North Cedar neighborhood, but that's what I expect to happen. Coming back south, it'll be a lot easier to jump on the trail, you don't have to cross lanes of traffic, and so there's probably less coming back south of that happening than northbound. Now, the last thing I want to do is make a request, and that is that the segment that is not being looked at here be looked at in the future. The Bicycle Pedestrian Committee is strongly recommending that in that section between Lone Tree Road and the city limits, that a paved shoulder bike lane be added at some point in the near future, and put that into the planning, so that would make that the continuous network. The bike plan does call for that right now, so it's not a change in what's in your adopted plan, but we'd just like to advocate for that and get it on the record. Thank you very much, appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight.
Thank you. Any further oral comments on this public hearing? Hearing and seeing none, I will declare the hearing closed. Item 2 is Resolution Approving/Adopting the Plans for the Center Street Recreational Trail Project. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion from council?
Could I ask the city staff a question? Center Street, we're working on Center Street now, but we're not rebuilding the street for a while because it's still in good condition. When we go to rebuild the street, will there be an opportunity to do other kind of bike accommodations down the road, or will we just rebuild the street?
I think that's definitely something we would certainly consider with kind of our complete streets checklist, is to see if we could accommodate bicyclists in another manner, so it would work itself into the design, if it's a possibility.
I forget how far out in the future that is. It's quite a few years.
It is quite a few years out, I don't remember exactly either, but it's not in the near term.
Okay. Anything further from council? Been motion second, requires a roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item 3 is a public hearing on a proposed agreement for private development and conveyance of certain city-owned real estate. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Any written objections filed with the city clerk?
I have no written objections on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Before the public oral comments, I believe Shane Graham, city staff, has some comments on the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. City staff has been working with Yuri Dmitrov of CRMS LLC, is the holding company that owns Avalina Transport LLC. He is looking to build a new trucking and transportation facility up in our northern Cedar Falls Industrial Park on railway, just west of Levercy Road. It's lot 18, so it's just west of the eastern central Iowa co-op. It's a 2.8 acre lot, or 3.5 acres, but you minus the setbacks and open space requirements, it comes out to a 2.8 acre lot, and the developer is requesting to build a approximate 18,000 square foot trucking facility with associated parking area for truck movements and storage of semi-trailers. We've been working with him for the past few months. The minimum assessment would be $600,000, and it would involve the deeding over of the lot at no cost to the developer. There would be no other incentives involved, as city policy typically dictates that you need over a million dollar valuation to receive any tax abatements. This is going to fall underneath that, so it would fall in line with kind of what we offer for land incentives only. So at this time, staff is recommending approval of the development agreement and deeding over the property to Mr. Dmitrov.
Thank you, Shane. Open up the public comments.
Item 3 is very similar to a number of the items that follow. And one of the points that is in each of those agreements that I noted is this minimum assessment agreement. Now, we heard that it was $600,000, but it's not clear how that compares to regular assessment because it obviously is a building that may cost more than 600,000, but for purpose of taxes, they're only saying 600,000. The real problem with this kind of agreement is that it really is done on the backs of the Cedar Falls people, because every time one of these groups come in, they get breaks that have forced a number of things. It's forced reduction in the fire safety, it's forced reduction in trash pickup, and it's forced people to pay more through the utilities for things that used to be at least two months out of the year free. So as I've chronicled these companies coming in, they've gotten a sweetheart deal. One of them even got 18.4 acres given to them. So the point that I'm making is that I would like to know if you have a minimum assessment agreement, how much is that putting even more burden on the taxpayers?
Thank you for the public. To the previous speaker, Shane, can you mention briefly, in terms of establishing that assessment early on, and just very briefly, how that gets established, how it compares to other type of buildings, and why we do that?
Right, so the minimum assessment agreement is required. The urban renewal law kind of dictates that you have a minimum assessment agreement in place when you donate land, and that's done in order for the city to collect the revenue back by the taxes that it pays, in order to pay for what the city paid upfront when it pays for land and infrastructure to get an industrial park like this operational. So we include minimum assessment agreements in order to put a minimum valuation on it that ensures that they will be paying a certain amount of taxes, which there in turn ensures that we're receiving the money back that we had put into the property. So it's a typical, all of our agreements do have assessment agreements for that reason.
Very good, thank you. Any further oral comments?
I'd just like to say that that's the bottom threshold. If it ends up that the valuation of the property is more than that, then that's what the taxable value will be. This sets that lowest floor per this agreement.
Very good, thanks again. I'll now declare the hearing closed. Move on to Item 4 is Resolution Approving and Authorizing Execution of an Agreement for Private Development and a Minimum Assessment Agreement in Approving and Authorizing Execution of a Quick Claim/Deed Convaying Title to Certain Real Estate. Is there a motion, please?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, appreciate your investment in the city. Item 5 is a Public Hearing on Proposed Agreement for Private Development and Conveyance of Certain City-Owned Real Estate. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Any objections with the city clerk?
I have no written objections on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Before public comment, I think you're up again, Shane.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, city staff has been working with FN Investors LLC over the past several months, looking at building a 20,600 square foot building for a new lab and office facility. It would be owned and operated by FN Investors and leased to Test America. We're in the West Viking Road Industrial Park along Venture Way, Western Production Drive, just east of the CrossFit Kilo Gym Building out in the West Viking Road Industrial Park. Again, this would be a 20,600 square foot building on two lots that we, that the city owns, totaling 4.6 acres. There is quite a large open space berm along the north side of the lot, so the actual usable area of the lot itself is just under three acres. So again, this falls kind of in line with past developments for offering land incentives. I did provide a general site plan in your packet that they've provided, kind of showing the site layout. They are showing a potential 10,000 square foot building addition in the future, and they do have area for parking and truck movements, so they are looking at a site of that size. This one would have a minimum valuation of 2.5 million, with an overall value with land at 2.8 million, so this would also qualify for a tax abatement, a five-year partial property tax abatement. We generally, staff would run that through city council after they pull the permit and get working on the project, so that would be coming in the future for a five-year property tax abatement. So again, with this agreement, staff is recommending approval of the development agreement and the quick claim deed to the developer.
Thank you, Shane. Now open up for public comment.
We just heard the magic words, that the usual deal has been made, that the first year, they're forgiven 75% of the taxes that they ordinarily would pay, and they would only get up to full taxes in the fifth year, if they pay it then, because oftentimes those deals are renegotiated in the last years. But again, this kind of agreement is a drain on the people, resources, and the way that the city council has done over the last four years is to reduce public services. And I think that if you look at the whole notion that's at stake in this, you know, you're giving them the property, quick claim deed, and you're only putting a minimum assessment on it. That's why the resources and budget of Cedar Falls is heavily skewed away from the people.
Thank you. Any further oral comments from the public this evening? Hearing and seeing none, I'll declare the hearing closed. Item 6 is a Resolution Approving and Authorizing Execution of an Agreement for Private Development and a Minimum Assessment Agreement in Approving and Authorizing Execution of a Quick Claim/Deed Convaying Title to Certain Real Estate. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion second, any further discussion from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item 7 is a Public Hearing on Proposed Agreement for Private Development and Conveyance of Certain City-Owned Real Estate. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Any objections filed with the city clerk?
I have no written objections on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Shane, you're up again, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff's been working with Sherman Construction Incorporated, looking at building, again, out in the West Viking Road Industrial Park, not very far from the last agreement that council just reviewed. This would be on the corner of Production Drive and Venture Way. It's a 1.1 acre lot. The applicant, the developer would like to build a 10,000 square foot building for a new office and warehouse facility, looking at the minimum valuation of 525,000, and again, the 10,000 square foot of building area for the 1.1 acre lot. It's a corner lot, so the buildable area minus setbacks and open space is only about 0.85 acres. So again, this kind of falls in line with what the city typically offers for land incentives. Because of the valuation being under a million dollars, this wouldn't qualify for any tax abatement, so this would just be a land incentive only. So again, staff is recommending approval of the development agreement.
Thank you. Open up the public comment.
As I listen here, there's no cost to the company for infrastructure, in other words, for the street or the road that's in front. I guess that was built by city funds. There's no assessment for the utilities that go into that. I guess that is part of the deal that they get. Now, if you were a private citizen, you'd have to pay for that. Look at the number of people who have to pay for sidewalks, and the number of people who have to put unnecessary parking spaces in their backyard. I mean, all these things, the burden falls on the people. There's no, these people don't suffer at all, and they get a really good deal.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Hearing and seeing none, I'll declare the hearing closed. Item 8 is a Resolution Approving and Authorizing Execution of an Agreement for Private Development and a Minimum Assessment Agreement in Approving and Authorizing Execution of a Quick Claim/Deed Convaying Title to Certain Real Estate. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any further comments from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item 9 is a Public Hearing on the Proposed Amendment Number 4 to the Cedar Falls Unified Highway 58 Corridor Urban Renewal Plan. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Any written objections filed with the city clerk?
I have no written objections on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Now to oral comments beforehand, I'll go to Shane Graham for some comments on this, sorry, I thought you were done.
That's why I'm wearing the microphone and not holding it. Thank you, Mayor. What we have tonight before council is Amendment Number 4 to the Cedar Falls Unified Highway 58 Corridor Urban Renewal Plan. The urban renewal plan has been in effect since, it's been merged a couple different times, but in 2012, it was unified with our northern industrial park urban renewal area. And there's been several amendments done to it over the past several years to add projects, modify projects. What we're doing with Amendment Number 4 is, the main goal of Amendment Number 4 is to take some areas out. So back in 1996, the city added the area in red on the map, and state code for urban renewal areas, it has a 20-year sunset life. So in 2016, the area in red on the screen technically was no longer collecting any increment because it met its 20-year timeframe. And so what we're doing here is just taking official action to remove it from the urban renewal area because there's really no sense of keeping it in there. So that's one of the goals of Amendment Number 4. There are two other smaller areas that we're looking to add in, and they are particularly areas of right of way along Viking Road. One area is west of Hudson Road. When the urban renewal area was put into effect, it didn't include the north side of Viking Road, it just went to the centerline, and so what we want to do is just include the north side of the roadway in order to better connect it with the West Viking Road Industrial Area. And then there's another small piece east of Highway 58 along Viking Road. Again, it was not included in the original urban renewal area, just this little piece on the north side of Viking Road. So again, since we're going through this amendment, we figured we would want to add this in again to make it more contiguous and include all the right of way along Viking Road. So that's the main goals of Amendment Number 4. We are, there was two projects that were completed that we're going to remove from the plan. Again, as projects are completed and we do amendments, we can go ahead and take projects out that are already done, and then we have the ability to add projects, but we're not adding any projects to this amendment, so.
Thank you, Shane. Open up for public comment. Hearing and seeing none, declare the hearing closed. Item 10 is a Resolution Determining this area of the city to be an economic development area and adopting Amendment Number 4 to the Highway 58 Corridor Urban Renewal Plan. Is there a motion, please?
So moved, adopt Amendment Number 4.
Motion second, any further discussion from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item 11 is passed in ordinance providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the amended urban renewal area be approved. This is upon its first consideration. Is there a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Motion second, any further discussion from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item 12 is a Public Hearing for the Proposed South Cedar Falls Urban Renewal Area. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any written objections filed with the city clerk?
I have no written objections on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Before public comment, I'll open up for Shane again, please.
Thank you, Mayor. What's before council tonight is the approval of the South Cedar Falls Urban Renewal Plan. This somewhat coincides with the last item on the agenda in that we are removing areas from amendment number four, and then part of that is we're looking to adopt a new urban renewal area. So part of this area that's in the new urban renewal area was part of the area that was removed, and that's mainly due to, most of this area that the city's looking to put in was still undeveloped. And so the goal here is to reestablish a new urban renewal area. Again, state code allows a 20-year sunset time on this to help drive development in this portion of the city. A majority of it is undeveloped. The city does own several parcels of land on each side of Hudson Road, south of Ridgeway. So again, this is meant to kind of help stimulate growth and development in this area of town. And I forgot to mention this in the last time, so part of the requirements for establishing either new urban renewal areas or amending plans is to hold consultation meetings with the school districts and the county. The city did do that and did not get any comments or questions on either plan. And then, again, one of the requirements for establishing a new urban renewal plan is to receive a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. So this did go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, who did review the request. What the Planning and Zoning Commission reviews is its concurrence with the general plan of the city, which is also known as the comprehensive plan, and recommend whether or not that the proposed urban renewal plan is in conformance with the comprehensive plan of the city. The Planning and Zoning Commission did review this on, at their meeting on April 25th, and did recommend approval unanimously with the plan being in conformance with the comprehensive plan. There is one other thing that is a part of the establishing a new urban renewal area per state code, and it's in regards to agricultural land. State code says that any agricultural property 10 acres or more in size requires a sign-off by the property owner in order to be included in any urban renewal area. There are four property owners within this area that need to sign what's called the consent, the agland consent form. We have received two back, and I've talked with a third property owner that will be getting us the, their signed agreement. And so we're still working to get the other one. And so at this time, staff would ask council to continue the hearing to the next meeting on May 21st in order to allow staff the time to get those consent forms in order to move forward with approving this plan.
Very good. Thank you, Shane. I will declare the hearing to continue until May 21st. In this, there is someone from the public here to comment. You realize it'll be up in two weeks as well.
I know you're continuing the hearing, and I know you don't know parliamentary procedure, but the point is, to us, we don't know what area you're talking about. It could be everything north of...
Please direct your comments to the chair.
Well, just because I look at him, I'm not, I'm still, Mr. Mayor, addressing my comments to you, okay? I don't have to look at you in order to address my comments to you. In this situation, there was no indication of the area that will be included in that. You may have it in your books, but we don't, I mean, we, I mean, nobody else has those meeting books that they nicely prepare for you. And again, you know, one thing that's so frustrating is that the mayor doesn't even allow points of information, a fundamental element in open discussion. He doesn't allow for points of order. He doesn't allow for any of these things. And there evidently is acquisition agreement from the city attorney. I mean, I think we should get back to using parliamentary law instead of the violations of the open meetings law that we have here.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Okay. Larry Wykoff, 4241 East Park Road. Still the best city in Iowa, Cedar Falls. Let me see if I have this right. Wildcatting laws to deflect revenue to the urban renewal quote-unquote "south side" of Cedar Falls. So is this not a democracy idea but a corrupt plan that can't be legitimized by any sitting lawyer? To those of us on the north side of Green Hill, do we therefore get to keep all our tax dollars for expenses and projects on the north side of Green Hill Road? I think this is hypocrisy. I don't know, I've never heard of a city dividing city assets up and saying, "You can have your money for this part, and we'll take money," or not even, we, nothing is mentioned about the north side of Cedar Falls. So this is just blatantly unbelievable that we've got, we've come that far in the city of Cedar Falls. I can't believe it. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Any further public comments? Shane, since it was mentioned as far as, I think, the previous speaker, a corrupt plan, this urban renewal is actually a state law that Cedar Falls takes advantage of in terms of our industrial park and what we see now in south side of town for the entire benefit of the community?
Correct. Yes, the urban renewal law is part of the state code.
Thank you. You bet. Items 13 and 14, council and public, is no longer applicable because of the continuation of this public hearing to May 21st. Item 15 is a public hearing on proposed amendments to the city's FY18 budget. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any objections filed with the city clerk?
I have no written objections on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Before public oral comments, I believe Lisa Roding is here to discuss this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. The fiscal year 2018 budget amendment is included, and this is required by Iowa code. We are required to amend the city budget prior to any expenditure exceeding the published budget for any single program. This budget was prepared over 18 months ago and was adopted on February 20th of 2017. But due to timing of capital projects, participation in grant funding, and changes in funding for various capital projects, budget amendments are necessary. Included in this budget amendment is also the department division annual amendments. This process must be completed by May 31st and submitted to the Black Hawk County auditor. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Lisa. I'll now open up for public comment.
We heard that these amendments occurred, but we didn't hear any amounts. We don't know how much over the other budget this, these amendments are. And it's, again, a case where you talk about openness and transparency. I mean, even that report had no openness or transparency. I would be appreciative if their report was a little bit more complete, that we would know what things were added specifically.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Hearing and seeing none. Item 16 is a resolution approving and adopting amendments to the city's FY18 budget. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
For the benefit of the public, everything in our packet is visible online to answer to some of the concerns that was brought forward.
Indeed.
So...
At the same time as it comes available to us.
Certainly. I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you. Requires a roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item 17 is a public hearing on the proposed issuance of not to exceed $5.8 million general obligation bonds for essential corporate purposes. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any objections with the city clerk?
I have no written objections on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I believe we have staff director Rodenbeck to describe
Sure.
this public hearing.
Mayor, actually, the next three hearings on the agenda kind of all go together. The city started the process of selling general obligation bonds to finance various projects listed on our CIP. Some of those projects include Westford Street, some trails, you heard Center Street Trail earlier, fire truck replacement, storm sewer improvements and sewer improvements. So as part of that process of selling bonds, we are required to have a public hearing, and so that's what we're doing tonight. I just want to mention why they're divided up into three different amounts is because we have to do that by law according to if they're general obligation or essential corporate, or if they're general purpose or essential corporate purpose under Iowa code. So that's why there, you have different parts to the public hearing.
Very good. Thank you, Jennifer. Open up now to public comments.
On these next three, they are all together. Once again, the specificity that we have, now, I've heard it more times than you know, that, oh, everything is on the line, online. But do you realize that that material doesn't come until late on Friday, and the bases are closed on, to check on Saturday and Sunday? So, you know, it operates as a way for the public not to know what's going on. And I know that the fact that we have these particular bonds, I mean, again, to purchase a new fire truck, why isn't that out of the regular funding? Maybe because enough changes have been made to prevent enough funding through taxes, because all these tax abatements that go on and tax reductions, but see, it would, it wouldn't be hard to develop a overhead so that people could see, you know, exactly what's going on. I mean, and when we get down to the consent things, which is an illegal process, when we get down to the consent thing, the mayor doesn't even do as good a job as reading it from the screen on what that is about, and we don't get anything more. And then you vote 7-0, 5-2 in favor. So what I'm saying is that we're the people. We're supposed to be your bosses. But the last four years, and I've been involved since '14, in fact, I, my first meeting here was when I was in a situation where I was upset by some of the decisions that were made about Cedar Falls cable, and I came to talk about that. But it was the time, the meeting after, the famous meeting, that you did your reorganization, and not only the reorganization...
Mr. Mayor?
We'll have, we'll have to...
I'm sorry to interrupt, but this isn't relevant to this.
Yes, it is relevant.
I agree.
Order for germaneness, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, it is relevant. But the key, the key to it is that ever since we've gone to this process...
Mr. Skane, this is not about the process. Sir, you're, you need to sit, need to sit down for germaneness.
Again, you know...
Mr. Skane, I'm calling you out of order. You need to sit down, please.
You're calling me out of, on what basis? What's the point?
On the basis that I'm the chair, and council has requested, and we don't believe it's full towards being germane.
The chair determines when you can speak.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment on this public hearing? Hearing and seeing none. Item 18 is a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed $5.8 million general obligation bonds. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor, for these, actually, for all three of the bonds, should it be listed in the documentation of what those bonds are specifically for? Because I just didn't see that in the...
Ms. Rodenbeck?
Yeah, I can just clarify that, actually, the meeting before, Mr. Green, where we set the public, date of the public hearing, there was a memo in there listing for each one what those projects were. So this time, you know, I just had about, it's the night of the public hearing, but actually, the meeting before had the list of what each one was covered.
Is it an extensive list for each one, or is it possible to read for the record what those are, if it's, if it's a long process?
It's on page 333.
Okay, all the way back.
Any further questions from council?
I would just add, you mentioned the CIP, and all of this is driven by that, which is all a public process that started when? How long, how many meetings have we had between CIP meetings and all of these follow-ups? I mean, it's not like we just did this tonight.
Sure. In November, the council would have goal-setting sessions that talked about CIP priorities and project priorities. And then in January, there would have been, I believe it was a committee meeting, and then also where a presentation was made about the CIP. And then at the council meeting in January, then you actually approved the CIP, and the whole long list of projects would have been in there with all different funding sources.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further from council? This requires a roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item 19 is a public hearing on a proposed issuance of not to exceed $550,000 general obligation bonds for a general corporate purpose. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any objections, Madam Clerk?
I have no written objections on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anything further to add, Jennifer, from your first... No, we're good. Open up the public comment. Hearing and seeing none, declare the hearing closed. Item 20 is a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed $550,000 in general obligation bonds. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item 21 is a public hearing on the proposed issuance of not to exceed $350,000 general obligation bonds for general corporate purposes. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any objections?
I have no written objections on file, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Open up the public comment. You're welcome.
Larry, again, you know, I was just thinking, what's the interest rate on these general obligation bonds? Is there a maximum or a minimum? What's the, what's the threshold?
I'll get to that if you're done speaking.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you for the question. Jennifer, do you have that?
Sure. We won't actually know the actual interest rate until we sell the bonds. So in a meeting in June, we'll actually be taking our bids, and, you know, we'll know that night what the actual interest rate is. I can tell you, two years ago, when we sold bonds, we did get a very favorable rate at that time of 1.5%. I would guess it's going to be a little higher than that, than it was the last time we sold bonds. But again, we won't know for sure until one of the meetings in June, when we actually sell them.
Very good. Thank you. Any further public comments? Hearing and seeing none, I'll declare the hearing closed. Item 22 is a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed $350,000 in general obligation bonds. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item F is old business. F one's past ordinance two nine twenty-two amending chapter twenty-nine of the Code of Ordinances relative to removal of terminology to be in conformance with the Code of Iowa upon its third and final consideration. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
Five voting aye, two voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item G is new business, the consent calendar. The following items will be acted upon by a voice vote with a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or the public requests items to be pulled separately for discussion. Is there any such request from the council? From the public?
I filed a point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Skene, careful.
I have a right to file a point of order.
Do you have items to pull from the consent agenda?
But the point is, I'm objecting to the fact.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, he's not a member of this body.
That's correct, Mr. Skene.
I am, I am a member of the public, and the public has a right to know.
The question before you is if you have any items to pull in the consent agenda. We'll need to go from there, please. Hearing and seeing none, I'll now summarize.
No, wait a second.
No, sir. You're out of order. Mr. Skene, please sit down.
I paused for one minute, one second.
Yes, sir.
And you say, oh, you don't have any. I do have some, okay? B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I.
Now, I'll summarize the consent agenda, less B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and I. Item A is approve the recommendation relative to the appointment of Jacob Madden as U and I student liaison. Item J is approve a request for temporary variance of the Code of Ordinances to allow a building exceeding thirty-four feet to be moved. K is approve a request for temporary signs for the College Hill Arts Festival, June twelfth through the seventeenth. L is approve applications and permits, and M is approving permits and license. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar, less the items pulled, please?
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Circling back to item B, it reads, receive and file the Committee the whole minutes of April sixteenth relative to the sewer rate study, stormwater rate study, Highway fifty-eight Viking Road update, bills and payrolls. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? Mr. Skene?
My comments are twofold. One, I can find no justification for the way the council has established the Committee the whole, because the Committee the whole operates within the meeting itself, and the reason for it.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, we're simply approving reports at this time. If Mr. Skene has any questions about those reports or their accuracy, that would be germane, but his subject is not germane.
I would agree with Councilman Wieland. You'll need to move on.
Yeah, I will move on, because Mr. Wieland, in his.
Please address the chair, Mr. Skene.
Well, okay, you people don't have names, okay? Mr. Mayor, the previous speaker just demonstrated a total lack of what the meaning of germane is.
We're not going to debate the tactics. It is, if it's the minutes.
See, again, I make a point, and Mr. Mayor, who is not supposed to participate.
I am calling you out of order. Please take a seat, Mr. Skene.
No, 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 no.
We are moving forward, council. With item B, it has been motion and second. Any further discussion from yourself? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Item C reads, receive and file the city council work session minutes of April thirtieth. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? From the public? Mr. Skene?
Yeah, the question is, on what basis do you have work sessions? Because everything that the council does is supposed to be open to the public, public open meetings law. I mean, it's, you violate the open meetings law over and over again.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, again, we're simply filing the report of those minutes.
Yeah.
If Mr. Skene has any questions regarding the accuracy of those minutes, that would be germane.
I agree with Mr. Wieland.
This discussion is out of order.
I agree with Mr. Wieland. Mr. Skene, please have a seat.
No.
We're moving on to item C.
Additional point of order. It says in Rule thirty-eight that speakers making comments that could be construed to be personal attacks, impertinent, or slanderous remarks towards another party shall be barred by the presiding officer from further comment before the council during the meeting, and I believe it'd be appropriate to exercise that at this time, sir.
Towards item C in particular? Okay, thank you. Any further from council? It's been motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed nay. Motion carries. Item D reads, receive and file the city goal-setting report of November thirteenth, November fifteenth, and organizational effectiveness report of March twenty-six, two thousand and eighteen. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further comment from council? From the public?
I just have one comment. All of these things, B, C, and D, say that you receive and file. Now, don't you have to act on bills and payroll? Because you can't, you can't act on bills and payroll in Committee the whole. I mean, see, you don't do the people right.
Thank you, Mr. Skene. We are now on item D, correct? Motion second. Any further discussion from public? Yes, yep, so it's been motion and second. On item D, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed nay. Motion carries. Item E is receive and file departmental month reports of March two thousand and eighteen. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? From the public? Thank you, Mr. Skene. A motion and second. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed nay. Motion carries. Item F is receive and file the biannual report of College Hill Partnership relative to the SMID funds and FY eighteen economic development grants. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? Mr. Skene?
Is this report available to the people? How is it available?
I'll certainly answer that question when you're done speaking, if you are. Thank you. I'm assuming this is in the packet that gets sent Friday to the public and to the council.
It was attached to this item, so the report filed by College Hill would have been associated with that item, yes.
Thank you. It's been motion and second. Any further discussion from council? All in favor?
Page six forty-one, anyone needs the page number?
Thank you, page six forty-one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Item G reads, receive and file the FY eighteen report of Millray Center for Entrepreneurship and Innovation relative to an FY eighteen economic development grant. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? From the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Item H is receive and file the bids received for the two thousand and eighteen permeable alley project. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion second. Anything from council? From the public?
Yes. I live very close to this particular project, and my alley looks like a war zone. It hasn't been treated in at least two years, and yet you spent, because in the other place you're asking authorization to spend sixty-seven thousand dollars on that one alley. And I question the whole notion of the permeable alley. That alley before it was worked on was in beautiful condition. I mean, it was, it didn't have much of a hill. But the point that I'm making here is that that one was a little less than some of the others. It was only sixty-seven thousand dollars. We could hire a firefighter for sixty-seven thousand dollars.
Thank you. Anything further from council?
Mr. Mayor, if we may, can city engineers speak to how that process goes in selecting permeable alleys?
Absolutely. City comment on that, please, city staff?
Sure, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So the, we have, I believe, what I have read was we have about a hundred and fifty alleys. We obviously can't do them all at once. We kind of have to try to prioritize and pick them off. So with permeable alleys, I mean, we try to pick alleys that aren't in great shape, and there's a way to improve them. There's a way to improve those alleys and make them better drain, drainable. But again, it's a tough prioritization. We have a hundred and fifty that need attention, but we can, we only do two or three a year. So it's not an easy process. You know, we hope to get to every alley, but there's always competition for funding. In this case, the alley was, this particular alley was less money than some of the others that have been done recently, and that's because we didn't have to make some storm sewer improvements that were tied to this particular alley. We could just focus on the alley itself and make that improvement and make it permeable.
Thank you. Anything further from council?
Mr. Mayor, just a quick question. Do we have an advertised service life for these, for the alleys? How long we expect them to last before they'll need to be redone?
I would think it would be very similar to pavement in the fact that I think you could get twenty, twenty years out, but again, it's going to depend a lot on the conditions. So we like to say that as a reference, but it's, every individual alley is going to act a little differently, but I think in general, with some maintenance, you can expect to get twenty years.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Item I reads, receive and file the bids received for the Campus Street Box Culver Project. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? From the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Moving on to item two, resolution calendar. Mr. Skene, I'm going to ask you to have a seat, please, just for keeping order. Appreciate it. Resolution calendar reads, the following items will be acted upon by a roll call vote in a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or the public requests not to be pulled separately for discussion. Any such requests from the council?
Item X.
X, X is an X-ray?
S, as in Sam.
S as in Sam. Anyone from the public?
A, B, C, I, J, U, S.
Separate. They're separate. Sir, X. Come to public comment, pulled already, I believe, by a council person. Anyone further from the public? I'll now summarize the resolution calendar, minus those items that have been pulled by council and by the public. Item D is approving the purchase of a wide-area mower. E is approving and authorizing execution of a contract relative to pavement marking services. F is approving expenditures of funds for repair and replacement at the water reclamation facility. G is approving the certificate of completion for the two thousand and sixteen sanitary sewer project. H is approving execution of contracts and easements in conjunction with the Campus Street Culver project. K is approving execution of quickclaim deeds conveying title to certain vacated right-of-way in conjunction with the Drywood Creek watershed improvement project. L is resolution approving the certificate of completion for the two thousand and fifteen public sidewalk repair, pedestrian ramp, and patching project. M is a resolution approving and accepting completion of public improvements in the Wild Horse Third Edition. N is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a supplemental agreement number six relative to the downtown levee project. O is approving execution of a maintenance and repair agreement relative to a post-construction stormwater management plan for property at Main and First Street. P is approving and authorizing execution of a maintenance repair agreement relative to a post-construction stormwater management plan on Capitol Way. R is approving and accepting the low bid in the amount of three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars for the Campus Street Box Culver project. T is approving a lease with Community Main Street relocating an office building. U is approving a College Hill overlay zoning site plan for a detached garage and driveway improvements. V and W are resolutions approving the preliminary and final plats for the River Place Fourth Edition. NY is approving submission of a high-quality jobs program application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority. Is there a motion to approve the resolution calendar minus those items pulled?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Requires a roll call vote, please. Mr. Green? I don't think it registered.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Moving back to item A, it reads, resolution approving adopting the FY nineteen city council goals and objection, objection, objectives, sorry. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Anything further from the council? From the public?
Once again, we're in a situation where the city council goals and objectives, were these discussed and adopted at an open meeting, or was it just a meeting that had certain invited guests?
I'll ask the question maybe, when you're done speaking, sir.
Yeah, okay, I mean, that's what I.
Okay, thank you. Motion second. Anything further from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
You won't answer?
No, I'm not going to ask.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item B is resolution approving authorizing execution of a notice of termination and a twenty-eight E agreement. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Anything further from council? From the public?
My question is, does this mean that the city is no longer in cooperation with the Beach North Shore Boat Club?
Is it your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Skene, you leave me in a bit difficult position because you continue to stand up here because I feel you're hijacking the meeting, but I'll ask that question. I think it's pertinent. Just remember that your speaking time on this item is over, okay? Thank you. Is, to staff, as far as this agreement's concerned, is.
Point of order.
No, sir, I spoke.
The point of information.
Mr. Mayor, this speaker's argumentative has been throughout the entire meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
See, I can't refer to you.
Mr. Skene, I'm going to conduct this meeting amongst the council and the chair. You are to be quiet, please.
Point of order.
Point of order.
The speaker, obviously, we want the public to speak, but continually standing up here is completely outside of how this process is supposed to work, and as the chair, you are in charge of maintaining the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. I tend to agree with you. Thank you, Mr. Skene. As far as the agreement's concerned with staff, the city is still in contact and working with the Beach Island. Sorry?
Mr. Mayor, yes, the city still is in cooperation with the North Shore Boat Club. This agreement is just to allow outside individuals or corporations or groups to donate money through the city to the benefit of the beach house.
Very good, thank you. Anything further on item B from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item C is resolution approving and authorizing an agreement for beverage and vending services with Atlantic Bottling Company relative to providing beverages at recreational facilities. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Anything from council? From the public? Requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item I is resolution approving and accepting nineteen warranty deeds and nineteen temporary easements in conjunction with the Center Street recreational trail project. in conjunction with the Center Street recreational trail project. Is there a motion, please?
Some move.
Second.
Motion second. Anything from council? From the public? Requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item J is resolution approving and accepting a permanent utility easement in conjunction with the Highway 58 and Viking Road project. Is there a motion, please?
Some move.
Second.
Motion second. Anything from council? From the public? Requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item Q reads, "Resolution approving and accepting the low bid in the amount of $67,400 for the 2018 permeable alley project." Is there a motion, please?
Some move.
Second.
Motion second. Anything from council? From the public?
Just one question. How does, and I hope, Mr. Mayor, you answer it. How does developing the permeable alley, which this year is taking $67,000, affect the maintenance of the other alleys that have not gotten maintenance? How does that affect it?
Thank you. Any further comments from the public? Any further comments to previous speaker to the council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
All voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item S is resolution approving and authorizing execution of a professional services agreement relative to the Green Hill Road traffic study. Is there a motion, please?
Some move.
Second.
Motion second. Anything from council?
This is a sizable amount of money. Why was it not put up for public bid?
I don't have the answer to that. Does staff have the answer to that?
Our city engineer can talk about the selection process that we went through in order to come to this recommendation to the council.
So, we went through a request for proposal process and sent those requests out to five engineering firms, and they submitted RFPs. We had an evaluation process, and the recommended consultant is the one that, through that selection process, came out as number one. There were, as part of that selection process, we did require them to submit fees. They weren't the least expensive, they weren't the most expensive. It was kind of a combination of looking at qualifications and fees together.
Why weren't we giving, given that information? I would like to see what the other bids were.
We can provide that. I guess I wasn't aware that it wasn't provided. We can provide that information.
Anything from council? Requires a roll call vote, please. Just hold your votes, I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Skane? Sorry.
As you recall, Snyder was given the project design for Main Street and recommended that there be a roundabout on 18th and Main. And finally, evidently, the project was clearly revised so that there was just maintenance for Main Street this year. I think that choosing Snyder, when all these other things have been, questions have been raised, it would be appropriate, I mean, it really would be appropriate, to postpone this item until the council was fully informed about the bidding process. It doesn't have to be approved right now. And that, Mr. Mayor, is one of the council's motions that they should move instead of tabling. Tabling is a different kind of motion, and you postponed it, the hearing on that one item, and it seems like this item might be a good one to postpone until the next meeting.
Thank you. Anything further from the public? Motion second. Requires a roll call vote, please.
Six voting aye, one voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I believe item X reads, "Resolution approving an amendment to the Central Business District Overlay Zoning District Site Plan relative to an MU development in the 100 block of East Second Street." Is there a motion, please?
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? From the public, gentlemen?
Good evening, and thanks, Mayor, and council members, and all the other city officials who are here tonight for your excellent work and your patience. I was here, my name is Don Blau, 527 Jessica Lane, Cedar Falls, and I have, I own a building down in the 100 block of Main Street. I was here this past January and just spoke briefly about some new construction that was going to be occurring behind the 100 block of Main Street, and I personally have always been in favor of progress and change in Cedar Falls, especially in the Main Street area, and I feel, over the past couple decades, we've had great leadership down there, we've had fantastic developers and construction that has really made Main Street pop up, and we've kind of really answered a lot of the questions of development, which involved more retail, some more housing, and a whole bunch of different things that I really felt put Cedar Falls, you know, in the forefront. And we are a destination community now, and when I speak to people, the visitors, when I'm downtown, I find that a lot of people want to come here to Cedar Falls on the weekends. This past weekend, I know we had the car show on Sunday, and I was down there for a couple hours in the morning and spoke to some people coming out of the hotel, and they traveled from Clear Lake, they traveled from McGregor, and a couple was there from Minneapolis, and they said how they really look forward to their yearly visits that they come to Cedar Falls for the shopping and for the different things that we have, the character we have downtown. So, with that, I think we always need to continually improve what we're doing here in our city. And as a personal aspect of having a property down there, I find that we're having some difficulty right now, and this is an issue you guys have had brought to you many, many times, about the parking. There are, right now, currently, in the 100 block of Main Street on both sides, there's six open apartments that are available for rent right now, and I just feel that one of the main things, the problems, when I purchased the building in 2005 and invested in building and remodeling, remodeling both the retail and the two apartments upstairs, parking was never brought up as an issue. We always had a 24-hour parking lot, we had large parking areas that they could get the city stickers, and it never got brought up. I have a rental that's going to be moving out at the end of this month, and the two times I've showed it on Sunday, and then one more today, the first issue they asked me about is the parking situations, and I say, you know, you can get a sticker and so forth, but it's coming to the point now that they're finding out, and anybody that goes downtown, and it used to be just three nights a week, but now you have to almost throw Wednesday in there, but any night, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, or Saturday, it gets difficult to find a parking spot after 5:30, 6 o'clock, and for a person that's renting there and working and wants to come home, even if they have the city sticker, that doesn't guarantee they get in a lot, you know, and there's only two or three lots, and we're kind of keep dwindling the sizes of these lots. But tonight, I'm speaking for around two dozen property owners and business owners downtown on Main Street that I've spoken to, and I really don't want to be the spokesperson for them, but I do get down quite a bit. I haven't been going quite as often lately because it's getting harder now, we're doing a lot of construction everywhere downtown now, and you guys know where all this is, so it is getting difficult to park. But the owners really wanted me to speak and address about the letter that I penned back in January. It was the first week of January, and this is about four months later, and I appreciate the people that read it and the people that did say some comments to me about the positive things that was brought out. I am, again, not in detriment to any kind of progress we're going to do down there, but I think sometimes we might be jumping a little too fast, and maybe what we've done over the decades to make Main Street what it is, I think maybe right now, we need to look, maybe slow down and look a little closer at how we're going at a rapid rate. But they asked me just to read a couple paragraphs out of the letter, and I don't want to be redundant because some of you have read this, but for the ones that haven't, they kind of wanted me to go on record, and I just want to read a couple paragraphs, and then, I don't want to publicize it, they said, "Go ahead and send, you know, in paper and things." And I don't think we need to do that here in our city. We have enough people here that are doing their jobs, and we'll make sure, and the developers are working with the city, so I think we have people that can come together and mesh and do things, you know, the proper way. But just part of the letter I wrote, I said, "As a property owner of the building in the 100 block, I have a real close attachment to the future building project, which is the one right behind my building."
You have one minute, Mr. Blau. Sorry.
How many?
One minute.
One minute, whoa. All right, I'll go real fast here. But due to urban expansion popularity, more residents are residing in the historic thing, this problem keeps expanding, and I'm going to paraphrase some things here. Parking has become, you know, such an issue. We have such an ambience of, for shopping, for entertaining, for dining down there in the city, that I think we have to really promote the people to come. And in closing, then, I just said that I really feel a two-story building would have been enough put down there, and now we want to, because we don't need another apartment building there because that takes up the parking spots in the evening. I can understand a retail and an event center or people coming down, but I think really we're going to, we need a business or things down there that are going to close at 5:00 and then let the people come down for the entertainment, to dining, and so forth. In closing, I wanted to mention Rosemary Beach. She was here last January and spoke, and Rosemary is a veteran of Cedar Falls, and she made the comment, and you guys were hearing, and I just paraphrased what Rosemary said, "We're moving way too fast with the building downtown. We need to slow down and evaluate what is evolving around us." And that makes me think, you know, Rosemary knows what's going on. I'm a baseball fan. Yogi Bear had a quote years ago, "Nobody goes there anymore because it's too crowded." And Yogi said that six decades ago. He knows what's going on. All right, and that comment, basically, just paraphrased, you know, "We need parking so people have the availability to come to Cedar Falls and enjoy it." Thank you very much.
Thank you for your positive comments, constructive. Appreciate it. Anything further from the public?
Mark Kitchell, developer Eagleview from downtown. I'd like to actually echo Don's comments, and I'd like to thank everybody on the council for, it's been a long night, and it seems like there's a lot of opposition that's being spoken. And honestly, I feel like it's maybe just time that somebody stand up in front and say thank you for the work that's been being done. It is not an easy process to go through this, and I just will tell you, this is the seventh time that I've stood in front of this group. I've been in front of P&amp;Z seven times, I've been in front of the Main Street Design Committee seven times, over the course of six years, and that's to build four buildings. To say that anybody in our community gets everything that they want is probably not fair. We've listened to a lot of people, we are trying to be a vote of progress, you know. My family's been here for 100 years. They started with Wrath Packing Company, and they, you know, went through printers and everything else. We've got to have innovation, we've got to have growth, we've got to have progress. When I came of age, the mall was where people were shopping and people were trying to figure out how to get the downtown turned around. You know what? We have a vibrant downtown now. It's, you know, I bless all of the work that's been done before us, but we have to figure out how to move it ahead and get young people involved, new businesses to move downtown, and it's the combination of all of those things that I think will continue to make our downtown successful. I agree, we need parking. We have negotiated this point forever, and I think tomorrow, it's wonderful that Community Main Street, who is the voice of the downtown, is pulling together a strategic planning meeting, and guess what? Parking is one of the center things. People say parking and the absence of parking means that there's things going on, and I think that's exactly what's going on, and I'm pleased as heck with what's going on in our downtown. I'm sure that we will come up with a good public parking plan. This building will, all of the people that are going to park on this building will park on private spaces, spaces that we've already paid for and built with private dollars. So, if there's any question about any of that, I would love to take it, but I think we're, we've gone through this planning process, we've heard it all, and I just think a few voices, you know, have to understand that we're all working together.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, Mark. Anything further from the public?
For that speaker, could he explain, Mark, could you just explain what's being done here? You're going from a mezzanine to another floor? Just explain a little bit what this, actually, this item is.
If you don't mind, Mr. Kitchell.
I'm sorry.
No problem. So, the original master plan that we put forth was really including the 100 block of parking. It included this building, which was a mezzanine plus three floors, and then it also included the plaza. So, what we've essentially done now is the parking spaces that we had built, actually, we have 316 parking places. We are north of what was agreed in the master plan, and we also have more parking than what was actually originally required by the C3 zoning, by a substantial amount. So, we're very much added to the overall parking count in the downtown. What we have found is the second floor, which included, by the way, with your all support, the Mill Race project, which is about bringing new, young businesses to downtown, is working. And we're having businesses that are interested in growing and staying downtown. Young people want to live and work in these places. The original plan had essentially mezzanine space there where people could have worked, you know, in mezzanine areas. We've combined it all and just made it into office space. There's actually about eight or nine thousand feet of that. All of those people will be parking on private spaces. We have permits for all of our businesses, and leases include all of the requirement that they park only in private spaces. So, none of these people will be in any parking spaces or competing with any other customers or employees of any of the existing businesses. We've made sure of that.
So, you're going from one big open area to subdividing it into smaller spaces?
The opposite. It was originally mezzanine spaces, and now it'll be just office suites, but we specifically wanted to call out that there'll be offices there. Yep.
Thank you, Mark. Yes.
Could I ask another question? I noticed in the packet, they describe the lack of requirement for office space, parking for office space. Along with that, I see they specify single-occupant studio units. I would consider that kind of a flawed thought, that a single unit would only have one person in it. Often, with the price of the unit, you're going to see couples and so on renting these. In addition to that, I don't see visitor parking allocated in here because downtown becoming more and more popular for the weekend in particular, starting on Wednesday, as they said. Everybody says, "Come on down, enjoy the town, enjoy the entertainment in the evening." Your excess parking disappears rapidly, and my constituents, merchants, have you heard, are very concerned with this. Handicap zone, or spots, I don't see those listed here. So, in light of Community Main Street's strategic planning session, would you be opposed to tabling this to committee and then listening to what the results are and discuss with the meeting tomorrow?
I think tomorrow's meeting is really a focus of public parking. I feel like in good faith, we have gone through this discussion five or six times now, and when we accommodated the requirement for parking that was in excess of the C3 zoning requirement, I feel like we made a good faith effort to try and improve parking in downtown. We are living within our economic means, just like any developer would. I think we've actually come back and we're in, we're north of that requirement now. I think it's very difficult, after five or six years' worth of work and planning and financing activities and everything else, that at this stage in the game, the questions that we build all of our business plan assumptions on get challenged. If there are questions like these that are zoning-related questions or, you know, things that you as a council want to see improved in it, I think that's great that that dialogue happened, but I think you've got to do it for projects in the future. You can't hold projects that are already in place. We're doing what we can to comply with existing zoning and related ordinances. I don't feel it's fair to change the rules when we're just trying to actually get a project finished.
Anything further from council?
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Just a quick question for staff, I guess, is, does the changes of making this mezzanine into office spaces change the requirement on the parking?
It doesn't, oh, sir.
Good evening, Karen Howard. No, it doesn't change the requirement because office space does not require parking in the downtown, similar to any other office space in the downtown.
Mr. Miller, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just going to, somewhat of a response, but at the same time, just kind of talk about where I'm at. I think some of, at least the folks I've talked to, their frustration is that this is changing at the 11th hour, if you will. So, I think there is some validity to some questions from the council or from neighboring residents as to why the change now, when it took a lot of vetting anyway to get people on board in the past. So, just to put that out there, I can understand some people's frustration with this to a certain degree. That said, finding a developer that lives in our city and- That said, finding a developer that lives in our city and on that side of it, I think, is a balance there that we were very fortunate to have. So not that, that doesn't come without frustration from other folks that have put their savings and everything else into downtown, but I think as far as some of that parking stuff goes, Mr. Kitchell's gone well above what was required, especially with the C-3, with no parking requirement for offices. So this is a tricky one, like all the rest of them, but there's a compromise to be had in here, and I guess I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Anything further from council? This requires a roll call vote, please.
Six voting aye, one voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to item three, is a pass a motion amending Chapter 27 utilities relative to sanitary sewer rates upon its first consideration. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Are you a second?
Yep.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
A voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item four is passed, nor in submitting Chapter 27 utilities relative to stormwater management rates upon its first consideration. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
A voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item H, is there a motion to allow bills and payroll?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Requires a roll call vote, please. Mr. Wieland, I don't think it registered, sir.
Yes.
A voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item I, does council have any items for referral this evening? Hearing and seeing none. Moving to item J, does council have any updates this evening?
I'd like to welcome our new student liaison. It's very exciting to have him as part of the team.
Yep, we're introducing you briefly.
Welcome.
Thank you for coming. Item L is public forum. Speakers will have one opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on topics germane to city business. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak tonight? Why, come on up. Oh, sorry, I didn't see you raise your hand. You're more than welcome.
Carol Lilly, Community Main Street. I didn't intend on speaking today, but I did want to clarify, since the strategic planning session that we are hosting was brought up, we are hosting a strategic planning session about downtown Cedar Falls with the idea that we would just like to reiterate kind of and determine our vision and what we see for the future of the community. So parking is one element of the discussion, but the session is not a parking session. So I just wanted to make that clear, so there were no expectations that we would come back with some magic parking plan.
Sure, thank you. Appreciate all you do. Yes.
Just a quick question for Ms. Lilly about, sorry, about the strategic plan. When do you expect to have that available for review? Is this a month-long process, or is this a much smaller piece?
It's a much smaller scale. There are two facilitators coming up from Main Street Iowa that will be helping us with guided discussion on a variety of topics. We'll look at successes in the past, what we have going on now, and then what we hope to see in the future. We have a wide range of people involved. We have developers involved. We have current building and business and property owners, and we have general stakeholders in the community who utilize downtown as a recruiting tool and to help draw business and industry to the community overall. So we've tried to get a broad base of people involved in that discussion.
So perhaps by end of summer?
Oh, I guess I didn't answer your question. Sorry about that. Yeah, definitely, we're hoping to have it done within a month. In June, we have an annual visit from the state on our organization itself, at which time we will talk about how our organization can help advance the vision of what we would like to see happen in downtown. And we have invited city staff to participate and some of our council representatives to participate in that as well.
Larry Wykoff, 4241 East Park Road still. Advocate for the people of good Cedar Falls. Okay, 58 and Viking intersection is a disaster, everybody. Remember when I suggested to drop the speed limit down to 45 three years ago? Well, you said it couldn't be done, so you trumped me and took the speed limit down to 35 in the construction zone. All day, I hear from people that have spent up to 45 minutes and four light changes to get through this mess. When, I know we're going to have to be patient for the next two years, but is anybody looking at doing something alternative to help people get through this intersection? Don't answer that. Also, I'd like to know if someone from the Cedar Falls Utilities asked for the second vote on the Quickstar to push for more income in that direction.
Thank you, Mr. Wykoff. Stephanie, I wanted to address that intersection, obviously, for more local folks. There's detour signs best we possibly can, even though the frustration is high and waits long.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
It's just generally the scope of this kind of project.
Yes, there are a number of alternate routes that have been posted throughout the community to try and encourage some of the traffic to divert to other locations. Obviously, a little bit less convenient than taking Highway 58 or Viking Road themselves. In the month of April, there were temporary efforts happening in terms of temporary pavement and things like that to be set up for a little bit more stable traffic pattern that I think was supposed to kick off this weekend here in terms of having one lane in each direction on 58 and on Viking, and that will be the mode that will occur throughout the summer months as they do work on the road.
Thank you.
And so then there will be some signals in place that accommodate that traffic pattern.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
One of the things that disturbs me is that people's freedom of speech is selectively applied. We just had a case where arbitrarily put into effect a five-minute rule. You don't have five-minute rules for debate. You have it for the public forum, which, again, is an infringement on the freedom to speak, but you have all these little hurdles. For example, people out of the blue can call something not germane. You don't even know what germane means. Germane means that if you're discussing an issue of parking, you can't talk about garbage That's not germane. Now, Congress gets away with it, but that's not the way the ordinary society does it. And Robert's Rules, you know, I don't think any of you know anything about Robert's Rules, and Robert does talk about what is germane and what is not germane. But it's the pattern. I mean, it's the pattern of harassment. Because if I say something that a councilman doesn't like, he says, "I'm tired of this." And it's not the first time he's said it. And I've been interrupted simply because I mentioned certain names in the past. What I'm saying is that this is a democracy. Well, Cedar Falls is not a democracy because we have an un-elected city administrator, so we're not a democracy. But the point is, in this whole situation, my whole intent is that issues are discussed intelligently. And when I read this thing about this consent, everything will be discussed without debate, or everything will be voted on without debate unless it's called forth. Now, again, I got this seven-page agenda. I couldn't get it before Friday late. And then, when I went through it, you know, there were so many items there that I had questions about. And I remember when the mayor, when I had a number of items, told me I was hijacking the agenda, hijacking the agenda. In other words, the agenda is to be voted on without debate because you can't have enough items out there. I wish, I wish as a citizen of this city, coming before this council, that I had the rights that are guaranteed to me by three documents. By, one, the Constitution of this United States, the First Amendment. Two, the Constitution of the State of Iowa. And three, the open meetings law. It's all violated. It's been violated for the last five years. And I still rankle about the fact that 2824, that created a city administrator that changed the form of government in this city, was passed when nobody knew about it because their attention was on the committee restructuring. And that whole meeting, that whole meeting lasted 18 minutes, 18 minutes. Nothing has been corrected.
Thank you, Mistress Kane. Anyone further for public comment? Yes, sir. Ask for your name and address, please, for the record.
Mayor and council, appreciate what you do. I'm Dave Hogaback, 2516 Ashland. The reason I'm up here is I've got just one thing that's been, like Mr. Wykoff said about Highway 58.
Let's leave names out of it, please.
Highway 58, can I talk about that?
Yes, just leave names out of the conversation. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. But it seems like they, as much as it's progressing, they're building, and as many trucks use that corridor, it seems like lowering the speed limit from Main Street to Highway 20 would have been worth a try before they, they're doing this at Viking. What are they going to do at Ridgeway and Green Hill? Are they going to do the same thing? It's quite, it seems like they build something and then tear it up. And I just don't want to see any more bad accidents.
You bet.
Quite a few years ago, I sent a letter to the DOT in the morning and asked them if there's anything more they could do in that area, and they said they've done everything they could. They put them metal fencing along, they put signage up. And my suggestion, I think they misinterpreted what I wanted to do. Waterloo has at least three over-the-road message signs that lets, they can put anything they want on there. They could let people know going towards 20, they have to stop three times, or maybe they won't at Viking after they get this done. But it's so congested, and I don't see where that's going to be the silver bullet. But I appreciate you listening to my concern. The reason, I'm kind of emotional about it, is I got in a bad accident at Ridgeway and Hudson Road. At that time, there was just a stop sign. I think there's a traffic light there now.
Yeah.
Ridgeway and, wait a minute, yeah, Ridgeway and Hudson Road.
Sure, there's a stop sign or a light now.
Is there a traffic light there?
Stop sign.
Stop sign.
Okay. Bad intersection. And the problem was, deer's let out, and that's a lot of traffic. Well, now you've got a whole lot of other people getting out at various times, shoppers, and I don't know, Waterloo's crossroads is 45 miles an hour. I was told on this type of highway, you can't, you can't lower the speed limit, but it's our pity. People are getting in bad accidents. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Thank you, I appreciate that. Anyone further for public comment this evening? Councils, are there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, and we'll see you in a couple weeks.